Good evening, everybody. Welcome to this meeting of the Lakeville Planning Board. This is a remote meeting. It is Thursday, February 11th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. And in accordance with the Governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general law, Chapter 30A, Section 20 relating to the 2020 novel coronavirus outbreak emergency, February 11th, 2021, public meeting of the planning board shall be physically closed to the public to avoid group congregation. However, to view this meeting in progress, please go to facebook.com/lakecam. You do not need a Facebook account to view the meeting. This meeting will be recorded and available to be viewed at a later date at www.lakecam.tv. Just as a formality, I'd like to take attendance on the planning board. Tonight, I have myself, Mark Knox, Barbara Mankowski, present, Peter Conroy, present, Michelle McHekren, excuse me, is present, and Jack Lynch. We have a full board and a quorum. And at this time, the first item on our agenda is a site plan review for 475 Kenneth Welch Drive. And we are meeting with Hayes Engineering regarding the site plan review. So at this time, who would like to take the floor?
I'll go ahead if I can. Thank you. My name is Phil Silverman. I'm an attorney at the law firm Vicente Sederberg. I'm here for Boston Botanical. We're here for site plan review. This is for a marijuana cultivation and product manufacturing facility at 475 Kenneth Welch Drive. Some of you, if you've been on the board, may recall this had previously been approved as a medical marijuana facility through another company. But today, what we're talking about is an adult use or recreational marijuana facility. There's not really a great deal of change with respect to it, but you know, technically, there is a distinction with the license at the at the state level in front of the Cannabis Control Commission. Additionally, I believe this board has some experience with these cannabis companies. So I don't, I don't think I really need to go too far into a lot of the security procedures, operational procedures. If you want me to, I'm happy to. But I don't want to sort of waste your time because I think you're probably as experienced as anybody in the state at this point in dealing with these types of facilities. So again, it is however cultivation and product manufacturing of marijuana, and they will follow all of the standard guidelines set forth by the CCC in terms of operations and security. I just want to make sure, is Tony Cappacetti from Hayes Engineering here? Did he make it on?
Yes, I'm here, Phil.
Oh, great, Tony. Okay. All right. Before we get to Tony, I just wanted to introduce the company. I thought it would be good. Edward Phipps is the CEO of the company. I think he just wanted to introduce himself, give you a little bit of background to him. And then I'm just going to turn it over to Tony to give you the the engineering, if I may. So Edward, why don't you just introduce yourself?
Thank you, Phil. And thanks to the board for taking the time this evening. My name is Edward Phipps. I'm the CEO and president of Boston Botanical. I'm from Massachusetts originally, Brockton, Massachusetts. I have a background in financial accounting and property management. Eight years ago, I moved to Maine to operate within its main medical, within its medical marijuana program. In that time, we have successfully built and operated a 5,000 square foot cultivation manufacturing in Casco, Maine, a 10,000 square foot cultivation facility in Sanford, Maine, and a licensed bottling and canning plant in Portland, Maine. We have, we focus on creating high quality, clean cannabis. Very proud to say we've been successful in Maine now being in over 100 stores. And we have built a very scalable blueprint to bring back to our home state of Massachusetts. And we believe that Lakeville is this opportunity at 475, so 475 Kenneth Welch Road is that right opportunity for us. And we look forward to working with the town. Thank you.
And now I'm just going to turn it over to Tony Cappacetti from Hayes Engineering to walk you through the plans. Tony?
Thank you. Tony Cappacetti with Hayes Engineering, 603 Salem Street, Wakefield, Mass. For the record, if you'd allow it, I could share my screen. I have the plan and I could just walk you through it.
Yeah, we would like that.
What you have before you is the plan that was submitted. There's very few changes.
It flipped off, Tony. We're not seeing the plan. It was on for a second.
See, it's showing up on my screen here.
It looks like some, a farm and some wheat fields or something right now.
Ah, all right. Sorry, I moved it to a different screen.
There we go.
So I wouldn't be looking away from the camera.
All right, that's it. This is it.
The problems with technology. I apologize.
Sure, go ahead.
What we have is an existing concrete block in, in metal frame building. It's approximately 20,000 square feet. It's on the southerly side of Kenneth Welch Drive, across from another marijuana cultivation facility. It's the 10 Kenneth Welch Drive. The applicant is seeking to reuse the existing building and the existing parking lot to the maximum extent practicable. The work consists of relining the parking lot, providing accessible spaces, an accessible route to the entrance, and other site improvements include some clearing of vegetation, just to improve the sight line. Looking to the west. It's a very basic plan. Since we've submitted it, we did receive some comments back from the fire department and conservation. I had a conversation with the fire chief, Mark O'Brien, I believe.
Mike.
Mike O'Brien. I'm sorry. The, what he asked for is access on three sides of the building. And we discussed a gravel fire access road. And I've sent this plan over to him for his approval, but I have not heard back yet. But this is what we discussed. I just wanted him to lay eyes on it. But basically, it is something, a product called grass pave. And it is a, for lack of a better way to describe it, these circular surfaces here stand about two inches tall. And they basically look like extruded six pack can holders, the plastic rings.
Is it sort of like a GeoGrid?
Exactly like a GeoGrid. So you, you'd put 12 inches of gravel down, but so it doesn't appear to be a gravel road. You put this GeoGrid and install turf, turf grass into it. And it looks and acts like grass most of the time. However, it is rated for an H20 loading. And we've used this before for fire access. So that's what the shaded area would be around the back inside of the building. And because there's the existing septic tank and sanitary septic service to the leaching field in that area, we wanted to stay off of that, which necessitates us to, to clear some of the tree line here. Now, what we, we show is the drip edge. There would be some trees along this edge here that may need to be pruned or in or removed. So that will necessitate us to go to conservation. So that gets into the conservation memo. We will file at a minimum request for determination or notice of intent. We'll be reaching out to, to the CONCOM agent. However, I don't know that that, that precludes the board from acting on the site plan. Typically, all other approvals are sought before you go to conservation. So this would be the modification. And because we are going to lose some plans, we are trying to be forward thinking. Some plants, there's a landscape area here and a plant by the sign that would be changed. We'd add two red maples to the streetscape, kind of as, as street plantings on our site to offset the loss of trees. But beyond that, very little change. I think the last time it came before you, there was a small addition in the back in the construction of a large parking lot. You know, we're estimating at absolute max 25 employees on site, realistically more, more like 22. And that would be on the weekend shifts. Because you'd be running multiple shifts during the day of 11 to 12. However, on the weekends, you'd have some overlap, which could get up to 22 people. So we're providing 26 spaces, including two handicap spaces. If there's any questions or areas you'd like to see a little more in depth or zoomed up on, I'm more than happy to.
So Tony, we also received some feedback from Conservation Commission. They referenced some fencing. Is that accurate? Or is they, are they reading the septic line as fencing?
I think they're reading the septic line as fencing. There is an existing gate that's located in this area here that we like to maintain, just for facility security, just for vehicular access. But there's no new fencing proposed.
So I just want to briefly just kind of scan through their letter, just to make sure I'm not missing anything. So type of fence, length and location, excavation. So that's basically negated by what you're telling me is they read that sewer line as fencing.
Correct.
So we just, we want to make sure that they confirm and understand that.
And.
They also had questions about alteration. You've got to remove some pavement.
We're not removing any pavement. We are, actually, you know what the fencing may be? We're proposing an enclosed dumpster area, which would be a solid chain link fence, kind of an opaque fence, either vinyl or chain link around two, two small dumpsters on the existing pavement. But we're not proposing any removal or addition of pavement.
And is that within the buffer zone for them?
That is with the, so there's, there's very little, other than this interior portion of the building, that is not within the buffer zone.
Yep.
It's within existing disturbed area. We were going to just basically contend that it's existing disturbed. However, with the addition from the fire chief's request, we will be required to go in front of the commission. So we would deal with all those items in front of the commission through either an RDA, request for determination of applicability, or a full notice of intent.
Right.
So that's why I didn't focus too much on the conservation comments. I apologize.
Yeah, no, no problem at all. I understand. I'm actually on the commission as well. So would look forward to seeing you over there if this all goes through for you. So I have a concern, and obviously, I'd want the chief to make a comment on what you've provided. Just because I assume when you put down that GeoGrid and make grass, it's going to look like the rest of the lawn.
Correct. So we would typically, there'd be some sort of demarcation, whether landscape stones to kind of outline the, the area of the lawn.
Yeah.
And then there would also be, the chief did discuss an ongoing maintenance agreement where we would plow and maintain that area during the winter. So it would always be clear.
All right. In that operations and maintenance, obviously, we want something to make sure it handles the stormwater. But the, the fire access path where you had to prune back, we want to make sure you continue to maintain the pruning as well, so that that side stays open. Because we, we do have a couple of, actually, that, that 310 Kenneth Welch across the way, they have a fire access that we've had to have them open up on the backside of the building. Just, just after 20 years, it, you know, maintenance gets forgotten about.
No, we'd be, we'd be happy of having that as, as part of the, either the, the site plan review or the, the special permit would be recorded. And if the, the planning board wanted to make that a recommendation, that would be a little bit stronger because it would run with the, with the use.
Right. Yeah. And you guys obviously know you have to go through the zoning board of appeals for your special permit. You're really not looking for any relief other than the special permit through the zoning board of appeals, correct? Really not making any building changes that already exist.
Correct.
Okay. At this point, I'd like to open the floor to any other board members that have questions. If I could see a hand, Barbara, if you'd like to.
Hey, Mark. Yep. My question is for the engineer. The, the guidelines for our town indicate that we're supposed to have 150 feet from the fire access roads to any location on the exterior wall of the first story of this building. I can't see from the plans we're looking at, but will we have 150? Can you show me on the plans where?
150 feet?
That's.
That's, the width of this building is about 100, 100 feet. So you would be at the end here. So that'd be 100 feet here. But then you also have access from this point. So there would be no part of the building that would be greater than 150 feet from the paved or grass paved area that the fire department would access from.
Okay. I'm going to, I'm going to make this statement, and it's not specific to you guys, but this is just for, for anybody else that's watching. You know, I feel very strongly that our fire department is, is, they're, they're very taxed on their resources and in what, in the time that they have. And I really like to see the first plans coming through be consistent with our existing bylaws. I do appreciate that this has been revised and that any approval that we issue will be conditioned upon their subsequent review of the new plan to make sure it's in compliance. But the, the bylaw is pretty clear as it's written. That's my last comment.
Thank you, Barbara. Peter, do you have any comments?
Yeah, I have, I have a couple of questions. Could you show us where, first of all, I do think 26 spaces for 22 employees is tight. I'll say that. That's the, you're approaching it like, you know, you're right there. It's full, basically. With any visitors or anybody else, it's, it's GM full. You can't have any extra here because then you'd obstruct traffic and obstruct the fire trucks. So could you briefly just describe where the deliveries will come and go? Where like FedEx and UPS will stop every day? Or, you know, just give me a rundown of the, of how the lot will work?
The deliveries, again, it, it's usually in and out, and they're required to use one ton vans. They're not commercial vehicles. So they're kind of, you know, your, your lodge Dodge Sprinter vans. There would be spaces available now Monday through Friday. The parking lot would be approximately half full. We'd be running two shifts of 12 approximately. It would be the Saturday and Sunday, which would be less frequent delivery days because the deliveries are coordinated through CCC as far as shipping out of the site and going to facilities. And we'd have 22 people because there'd be some overlap with, with functions on the weekends. And they wouldn't be full shifts. So we don't feel that having four extra spaces is, is limiting the site. FedEx deliveries, again, they would have to use a space on the site. We, during the week, we'd have no issue. We could designate one as a FedEx delivery. But every person that goes into the facility is, you know, checked, cotted, logged. It's a secure facility. It's not like people can come and go. So the concern for visitors is, is basically inspectors and the like, not, it's not a business that's open for regular visits. It's, it's, it's a very secure, very, very difficult process by design. If someone comes in, they're, they're checked in, like I said, they're logged in, and then they're accompanied. If they're not working for the facility. So, so we feel that the parking needs are, are pretty good. And again, the, it's basically during trimming time and processing that the numbers go up, the actual grow process. I have some clients that grow and control everything from an iPad sitting at home. It's, it's, it's a pretty technology-rich industry.
Yeah, that, thanks. That answers that. So actually, you know, you're, you're more looking at like 11 to 12 people during the week. Is that right? Is that what I heard?
That's correct. And you may have some overlap. Yeah, you may have some overlap at shift change.
Right.
So, but again, you're, you're then vacating the site. So five out of the seven days, you're looking at the half the parking lot of being available.
All right, thanks.
Michelle, do you have any comments?
Um, I guess my comment or question is, is along the same sort of line. If you're manufacturing and growing here, obviously, you're bringing it somewhere offsite to sell it. Are there, I'm not seeing any loading areas. Is, is that included in that parking lot?
So loading would occur at one of the doorways and just parked outside. We're talking marijuana products. I mean, from flower.
If I could help, it, what our clients generally do with these things, the product goes in totes. They're small. You'll generally, if you're sending out, you know, on a wholesale delivery, it may be two totes that go into a Sprinter van. So it's, it's very well coordinated in the sense that a van pulls up, you have the totes coming right out with our security personnel. They're brought to the van. The whole thing takes about a minute. But that's the extent of it. You don't need a huge loading dock here. It's just not really necessary for, for the way the deliveries work.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Well, I would, we're going to probably defer to the zoning board of appeals as to how they handle that. I know the, the building you referenced across the street, they actually have a little fenced in area that a van can pull into for some added security.
Sure.
I mean, and if you have extra parking spaces, I would recommend that you do something like that so that you could actually pull into a small fenced in corral for your own security to load a vehicle and then, and then back out so that the driver is secure and whatever. But again, that's going to be between zoning board of appeals and their conditions on the special permit. Jack, do you have any comments you'd like to make? Jack, you're muted.
There's, you know, going on at the facility, this is strictly a processing and then a distribution to retail locations, correct?
Correct. No retail.
Okay.
I have a follow-up question.
Go ahead, Barbara.
So it's my understanding that the Cannabis Control Committee, or whatever they're called, that they change the rules so that a facility like yours, doing this type of business, can actually do home delivery? Will home delivery be happening from this facility?
Okay, so, delivery, you can, we can't do it. Okay. You're allowed to have a delivery emanate from a facility like this, but not, we're not allowed to do home delivery. That would be a separate company, which is right now limited to economic empowerment and social equity applicants. They can start up these businesses for a three-year period. They're allowed to do it unless the local community prohibits it. So it is conceivable that.
One thing I think I've heard from community members about home delivery is they don't like the idea. It'd be like if you had cars driving around with Bud Light on the side of them, driving into the neighborhood, dropping things off. And the kids are going, hey, who's getting Bud Light delivered? That would be, you know, maybe a little undesirable.
Yeah.
And we, we would feel the same way as far as marking on any delivery. So that was going to be my follow-up questions. But if you don't believe that there'll be any, any delivery, that this will be purely wholesale sale, then I guess we can move past that point.
And as a matter of information for you, because we, my firm represents a number of delivery companies, you're not allowed to have markings on the vehicles like that. They're, they're devoid of markings. Yeah, for, for just the reason you mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
Tony, do you have, I can't see the whole screen, a signature block on this plan?
I do not have a signature block on this plan. And, and this was a draft that we sent to the fire chief because I wanted his approval. So we didn't, I don't even have the PE and PLS sale on it. But we could prepare a mile out for endorsement and FedEx it over to you. Should the board move to.
So a question, Mark, when you have a chance?
Peter, go right ahead.
So I don't know if any of the outdoor lighting has changed from its prior use. But are you going to have any changes to the parking lot lighting? And also, I'd like to see what the sign is going to be at the entrance and how it's lit? Maybe it's, maybe you have it already.
We haven't included any updating. It's, it's fairly well lit up to about this point from the parking area. So we were trying to reuse the existing materials. And the sign itself, we didn't propose any changes. It would be refaced if you want. I could pull the street view up so you could see what's there. But there was nothing major proposed. And it wasn't an offensive looking sign that either. It's a. It always puts me on the wrong side of the street. But yeah, it, it's just a standard, you know, twin granite post with caps, wooden sign. So anything that would go in its place would be similar. And it's got a couple of burning bushes on either side. This one would be the one that's, that's removed. And then we would replace red maples along the front edge.
And, and the, the sign, just under Cannabis Control Commission requirements, all it can do, it's going to say the name of the company, can't have any symbols of marijuana or anything like this. It's really for wayfinding and nothing more.
So actually, this is a very helpful picture. Could you go back to, could you just scan left a little bit to the loading doors? So you're going to reconfigure these doors to, or you're going to lose two? Or is this an old picture?
No, I, I think these two doors here would, would most likely be infilled. And then shipping and receiving could occur out of this, this space here. And if you look at the site plan.
Okay.
That would be these two spaces here, which we, we'd use for our deliveries. And if the board wanted it to be fenced in, we could put our fencing right around those two spaces.
That's it for me, Mark. That's, that's helpful. Thank you.
Yep. I'm just running down my little checklist.
Is there any special security required for this type of facility?
Quite a bit. So just run down the security features. The exterior, you have cameras 360 degrees. We were able to see all around everybody that's coming and going. On the interior, every window, every door, every room where marijuana is handled and stored. You've got a primary alarm system that connects to an offsite company monitored 24/7. If something were to be compromised with that, there's actually a backup company as well that's also on that. If the primary doesn't get notified, the backup will. The whole facility is limited access. You know, you, there's a, for example, there's a vault where the finished product is kept. Person who, you know, is responsible for cleaning the facility, for example, has no need to get into that vault. They won't have access to it. Various rooms, only certain people will have access to it. It's key card system. Sometimes they do biometric. I don't think that's been determined which way we'll go yet. Every bit of inventory here is tracked by what's called a seed to sale tracking system. The minute the plant starts to grow, there's a barcode that's slapped on it and it is entered into inventory. And so, you know, and it's constantly weighed and updated. So if something that weighed, a plant that weighed an ounce and a half last week, suddenly only weighs a half an ounce, the inventory system notifies you. And then you go back to the footage on those cameras. It's kept for 90 days. And you figure out who diverted it for whatever reason. And the minute you figure that out, that person's terminated because CCC has a no tolerance policy with respect to that sort of thing. There is a hardened vault where all the finished product goes. So if somebody after hours was looking to try to get into this facility, they've got to get by the cameras. They've got to get in through all sorts of doors that are limited access. And then they get to the vault, which is designed to take, you know. That are limited access and then they get to the vault, which is designed to take, you know, 15, 20 minutes to get through. Um, by that time, the local authorities are gonna know, so, um, you know, as I said, extensive security and it is monitored 24/7.
Great, thank you. Uh, do any other board members have any other questions or comments?
No.
Okay, um, so, I guess, at this point. I'm inclined to ask you, um, to provide a plan that has a signature block. I'd like on that plan also to have the written operations and maintenance for the stormwater. And include operations, maintenance for the pruning of the fire lane. Uh, to make sure that that gets, uh, maintained and, and recorded on a plan of record. Uh, if we were to motion to recommend approval. That would be also, uh, pending Chief O'Brien's review of the fire lane access to make sure that. He's satisfied by what you have recommended or provided. And, uh. Also, I'd like you to add a note to the plan that any lighting, if needed, will comply with Lakeville's, uh, outdoor lighting bylaw.
Yep.
So. I guess the long short of it is, you know, you, you've heard our comments. I just, I don't want to sign a plan that could be changed. So, if you get a positive response and we get that same positive response from Chief O'Brien of what you've provided. You know, we'll conditionally approve and we're, we're not gonna sign it until. That's done, you know? So I'd make a motion to recommend approval. Of a plan that includes operation maintenance of stormwater, including pruning of the fire lane. A note of any lighting needed will comply with AFO's bylaw. And it would be pending Chief O'Brien's approval of the fire access lane. That's my motion for recommending approval.
I'll second that.
Sorry, I have a motion and a second.
I'd like to propose an amendment that the maintenance agreement be referenced on the plans. As a condition of the approval. Okay, good, just wanna be clear.
You got that right, Tony?
That's correct, I have that O and M, uh, for both stormwater and fire lane.
Okay.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Barbara?
Aye.
Jack votes aye, Peter?
Aye.
Aye, Michelle?
Aye.
And myself, so motion carries unanimously. And I, I will say that we, after this, we have, uh, as part of our packet to make recommendations for zoning board of appeals. And we probably will, uh, with discussion, recommend some sort of, uh. Either a fenced in area for vehicle loading. Or just that they implement sufficient security measures for loading. Uh, just to make sure that they're included because that will apparently happen in the parking lot.
Right.
So, I think you guys are good.
Awesome, thank you very much, appreciate it.
You're welcome, and, uh, like I say, after you talk to Chief O'Brien, get a, a Mylar to, uh, Kathy in the office and we'll sign that.
Thank you again.
Thanks everyone, have a good night.
You also. So, next on the agenda, review.
Flood plane.
EVA petition for Boston Botanicals. So, that, that would be my only recommendation to the zoning board of appeals would be. To recommend either a fenced in vehicle loading area. Or that they implement other sufficient security measures for parking lot loading. And I, I would like the cage rather than. A security guard walking out with a tote. I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts towards that?
Mark, just help me understand, what's, what would be the purpose of the gating, I'm not opposed to it, but just help me understand why?
So, again, if you drove by 310 Kenneth Welch, which is immediately across the street from that property that we just reviewed. They have a van loading area that has fencing on two sides and a gate against the building. So they can pull into it, close the gate. The vehicle that's in question, that's gonna be loaded with product would be inside a fenced in area. So that nobody outside could access the vehicle.
Okay.
Unless they came out from the building with the product to load the vehicle.
Okay, fine.
And then, once the vehicle's loaded and they're ready to go, the gate would open and the vehicle drives off.
Okay.
It just creates a little secure space for that vehicle to be loaded.
Okay, good, thank you.
Mark, I agree with you, do you think the fenced in area is gonna eat up a lot of that parking lot, just a thought, you know? It is what it is, but I think they need it. If I was building one of these places, I'd have indoor, I, I, I'd have a way to pull ins, pull inside, you know? Cause then it's all weather, but that's just my opinion.
I agree, I mean, they, they have that overhead door that's right there in the parking area, you just hash mark off a parking space and you can drive right through into that overhead door.
Did we, Nick, um, would you request that they do that? Make a drive-in?
I'm, I'm gonna leave it up to the ZVA, I, I entrust that with a recommendation, they'll make the right decision. I, I'm not looking to step on their toes, but I do think that the security thing would be. Key and important.
When you look at their floor plan, like every, every square inch of the inside is spoken for, so maybe they don't feel as though they can afford it, so.
Yeah, yeah, it is a, a tight layout. So would anybody else, uh, recommend any other? Or like to make any other recommendations to the zoning board of appeals or that special permit?
Can't think of anything else.
Okay, Kathy, do you sufficiently have something jotted down based on that security space? Alright, so I'll make a motion to recommend either a fenced in vehicle loading cage or other sufficient security measures for loading.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor? Uh, Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack?
Aye.
And myself, aye. Okay, uh. Next item on the agenda is the floodplain bylaw. Has anybody had a chance to look at that?
Yep.
Yes.
I've looked at it a couple of times, I went through and highlighted. Uh, so I'd like to have a brief discussion, but Kathy, I'd like you to. Post for a public hearing. At the earliest. Regular planning board meeting that you can get one posted. For adopting the model floodplain bylaw, or whatever we wanna call this thing. Um, so. Does everybody have a copy of that in front of them?
Yep.
Okay, I'd like to just briefly take a quick walk through it. Um, I think I said before, I, I did forward. Uh. Questions or requests to both conservation commission and, um, the building commissioner. Um, and as we go through this, you'll kinda see why. So when you get to page three, which is section two. Purpose of the floodplain overlay district is to ensure public safety, limit any hazards, prevent the occurrence of public emergencies. Uh, which would also result from water quality contamination, pollutants due to flooding and so on, I'm not gonna read all that, but. Uh, item two under section two is the use of FEMA maps and supporting studies. And we have two choices, for a community must select the appropriate option as follows. Bylaw text for the communities with community-based firms, F B, F M's. Which is flood boundary and floodway maps if applicable and the F I S, which is the flood insurance study. Uh, so that language calls out for the community-based approach and option B. Text for communities with county-wide firms and, uh. Blood insurance studies. Uh, that was the one I wanted to defer to the conservation commission because I figured they were more versed in that than us. Uh, does anybody have any input? Cause if. Bush comes to shove.
Yep.
Kathy, I would also like to make sure that when we do get that public hearing posted. If we can't have Amy Quessell there, that we at least have sent this to her. Uh, Nate made a good point that she's probably doing this for a lot of other towns now. And that would be the question I would have for her is what one would fit Lakeville as far as how our. Flood maps are currently utilized. And I don't wanna assume. We continue.
I agree with that, Mark, and, um.
Go ahead.
When I looked into, um, asked some questions about this, and I think the reason why there's two different choices is that in the past. Um, floodplans were, were derived by community, they went community by community and now the science is going. Region by region, so we're part of, I think, the Cape Cod watershed, um, so it probably will end up being community-based, but we should definitely have legal, uh, council double check that.
Right, so, yes, I agree with that. Uh, if we continue down to item six. The designation of a community floodplain administrator, city or town of Lakeville. Where the blank hereby designates the position of blank. To be the official floodplain administrator for Lakeville. For the city or town, um, I thought. And, and again, that was one of my questions to both Nate and, uh, Mr. Bouchard. Was should that be the conservation agent or the building commissioner? Uh, I, I was hoping. That it could be conservation to take something off Nate's plate, but I have a feeling. Because he is really the, the major permit granting, uh, official for everything, that it's probably gonna be him. So, that was something else that I felt needed a recommendation. Uh, then if you continue on to section eight, variances to the building code. Obviously that's, uh, building commissioner related, I'm not, and I think that actually just goes to. Option B, certain communities have the authority to issue variances to the state building code. If your community has the authority from the board of building regulations and standards. You will have the text for local adoption, or you will use this text for local adoption. So I'm not sure if our community has that ability or not to hear from state building code. Uh, so again, waiting to hear back from building commissioner on that one. Continue down to, uh, item 10. Uh, city or town of blank, I think we can all agree that it's gonna be Lakeville for us. Uh, item 11, assure that all necessary permits are obtained. Uh, Lakeville's permit review process includes checklist. Item 12, there's nothing we need to fill out, but that is something I think that affects the planning board. Down the road, first thing in it, all subdivisions and development proposals. Such proposals minimize flood damage, public utilities and facilities are located and constructed. So as to minimize flood damage and adequate drainages provided. But we need to be cognizant of that when we get, um. Really any plan, whether it's a site plan or, uh, a subdivision that, uh. Utilities and stormwater are a big part of that, maybe that's, uh, where we get a peer review involved. Just to make sure, at least out of the gate, that that's done right. Not that we ever do, wanna do it wrong, but we wanna have some professional guidance the first few times. Item 16, in a riverine situation, the blank, appropriate official in community shall notify. I thought that might be conservation commissioner, where they're already in the wetlands and the riverine. That's, uh, I think within 200 feet of a, uh, river or stream. Sometimes called a riparian zone. And I think that's it, but that, those are my suggestions and or looming questions that I still have. So I will do a follow-up email to both. Bob Bouchard and Nate, just to hopefully get the, the two A and Bs, Barbara, go ahead.
Um, going back to item number 11, Mark, I'm just wondering about that checklist, who's gonna be responsible for developing the checklist? Um, it'd be nice to take something off Nate's plate if we could. Not offering to do it, I don't know, I wouldn't be able to be qualified, but, uh, I do think that's gonna be a to-do item.
Yeah, it's a great question, I mean.
So when you send the email over to, um, to, um, to Nate and, and Bob. Maybe just propose that, you know, can they, can they tell us who they feel would be the most appropriate person to develop the checklist, so they know it has to be done?
Yeah, I will.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, so that concludes my discussion, if anybody else wants to add anything to that, uh, just raise your hand, uh, and. Uh, Michelle, you had yours up first, go ahead.
Um, I just, I think there was something on number 20 as well for local enforcement. Um, when I read that, I was just, it says, this is not sample bylaw text, but rather an instruction. Please read the explanation, section four about importance of being able to point to specific local enforcement procedures for non-compliant floodplain development. So I didn't know if there was something else to that one as well, I didn't feel that it was clear, even when I went back to section four.
So, I, I would, I would imagine in that scenario that a building permit could not be issued if it wasn't in compliance. Um, so that's one side of it, they wouldn't have a building permit and the other side of it is a loan origination on any property that isn't. Compliant with local building codes and so forth, like if you built a room and you didn't have a permit pulled, that, that may not be financeable, it certainly wouldn't be. Um, insurable, so that may be the, the gate there to protect, to protect community. Um, again, that falls back to Nate.
And that's, when I read on page 16, I was thinking, yep, I mean, it's gonna, I, I would like to see, you know, somebody else be able to take this on, but. I, I don't know anyone besides Nate that would be, you know, that would.
Well, the problem is, is, is a stopgap in the permitting process and he's right there at the forefront of that.
Yeah.
Yep.
It would be difficult to get somebody else involved in. You know, half of the permitting. Yeah, cause I did have stuff highlighted, uh. Need to adopt or reference correct flood insurance rate maps. And where applicable, flood boundary, floodway maps, uh, and date them. And adopt or reference correct flood insurance study and date. So those are things. Is that something that's been provided this? Or is that just something we can look up and reference based on the, the latest model? And I guess we need to know if that needs to be updated, do we need to update that with the bylaw? Cause I'm sure, you know, they keep changing them.
And I think that.
They change all the time.
Yeah, there was like a whole section of, um, terms that need to be included in the bylaws with the definitions that said too, so that, that seems like it's part of this.
Yeah, there is a whole. Yeah, there is a whole back section. Is that something you feel that we need to actually provide definitions? Or was it just part of the text? Because I kind of glossed over the back 15 pages.
If you look at page 10, under section three, it said these additional definitions must be included in local bylaws or ordinances. And then it goes on to list all of the terms and the definitions. So I don't know, you know, how many of these are already included or not.
So my understanding of that is we adopt this document.
Okay.
And they become the definitions. Unless we felt there was something else that wasn't covered by this. These become the definitions. This entire 25-page document or 27-page document, that becomes the bylaw. So those, in my understanding, would be the definitions to cover the rest of the text. So I don't think that there's a choice to be made there. It's just we're adopting the entire 27-page document as the bylaw. And it's, I think, when you referenced item 20 in section two, this is not a sample by law text, but rather an instruction. And it goes into section three and four. I think that that's just stating that we clearly have to adopt sections three and four as part of entire bylaw along with sections one and two. And again, so
Amy's going to speak.
Kathy, that's something that, you know, when we get Amy either to go to the public hearing to adopt this bylaw, or if she cannot be present at that one, that we make sure she has a copy, that we get comments back from her regarding that. Nothing came out.
Now.
Yep, we got a little bit there.
Okay, I'm kind of far away. Wouldn't you have to have the document complete before you have the public hearing?
Yeah, but we're going to schedule the public hearing even if it's not. Because if we never schedule the public hearing, the document will never get approved. So I would rather schedule the public hearing and have to continue the public hearing for one meeting date.
I'll check on that. I'm not sure.
Isn't that what we're doing with the 43 Main Street?
It's different because that's for a special permit, and this is because you're, you're adopting a bylaw. So I, it's my understanding that what you're advertising in the paper is the end result, and that's what you're voting on. So if that document's not complete yet, I'm just not sure if, I'm not sure if you can do that or not. I would have to find out. In the past, I mean, we've done it. They've been complete and ready to go, and that's what the public hearing is on, that complete amendment that you've already voted on.
Okay. Barbara?
Yeah, I mean, I think Amy can weigh in on this very, very quickly. I don't, you know, either it does or it doesn't. And again, to your point, all the communities around us are going through exactly the same thing. So I don't think this is going to be reinventing the wheel. And probably is something that we can hear back from very, very quickly. My concern is we have to get this ready to go. And if we wait too long, our next hearing date, our next appointment date is going to be the 25th, right?
And there's not enough time. There's not enough time to have a public hearing that. So it would be
So we really have to do something, yeah.
March 11th. Right? So we need to, and you can advertise that by the 22nd?
If you wanted the hearing on March 11th.
Yeah.
Have to be in the newspaper the 4th and the 25th. So I would have to advertise it like Tuesday, next Tuesday.
Okay, let's email Amy tonight or tomorrow morning, first thing. And copy Mark and let her know that that's what we're trying to do because we have to get this, we don't have a choice. And we're not going to screw up the insurance for residents of Lakeville. So it has to be done. That's it. You know, I don't know that there's enough material changes that are going to take place in this after Amy takes a look that we couldn't advertise what we have, or be darn close to it, but we should double-check just to be sure.
So I agree with that. We need to get it to Amy Questle. I'll follow up an email with Nate and Bob Bouchard on those two items. So we can basically fill in the blanks and say A or B on those two items, and it will be complete. We're not creating any language other than just choosing A or B twice, writing in Lakeville about five times. And we have to appoint an administrator to do that. So by next Tuesday, we're going to have it done. Ready, break. Okay? So I'm going to say that that concludes our discussion on that tonight, but we need to act on it. Moving on. Site plan review bylaw. I actually changed one word in what I did. So currently, the bylaw reads applicants for a building permit for new construction or for modification of or addition to a business or industrial structure resulting in floor area of over 1,500 square feet. In the aggregate, shall submit six copies of site plan as described herein to the town clerk planning board. Failure to, the planning board to act within 21 days of the receipt of the site plan shall deem lack of opposition. So it's the whole floor area of over 1,500 square feet. We want to make sure that a minor interior remodel doesn't trigger site plan review. My suggestion at this point is applicants for a building permit for new construction or addition to a business or industrial structure that creates a disturbance in lot coverage of 1,500 square feet or more in the aggregate. Or if a change in occupancy, which increases the previously approved occupant load by 10% or more, shall submit six copies of a site plan described herein, town clerk, planning board approval, and so on. And again, we talked about, when we discussed this last, the 1,500 square feet of floor space would have meant that the 149 Bedford Street job wouldn't have needed site plan review because the original plan was 1,498 square feet. And so that's why I wanted to have it say creates a disturbance in lot coverage of 1,500 square feet. So when you start to factor in over dig or stormwater management or parking and loading all as part of a permit process. And we could increase if we were concerned about, and again, something we didn't want to cause is somebody needing to replace their septic system had to go through site plan review. Because you disturb easily 1,500 square feet doing that, but that's not the intent. But they would not be looking for a building permit to replace their septic system. So does anybody have any comment on that?
Mark, you ended that at, for change of occupant and not change of use. So we're keeping it a change of occupant, is that right? So if they go in and somebody's going to do the exact same thing?
I had, if, if or if a change in occupancy which increases the previously approved occupant load by 10% or more. So yes, I didn't do change in use because change in use can be a reach that we never achieve. A change in use would be from industrial to marijuana. And then that requires a special permit.
Yeah, that's fine.
But the change in occupancy. So if it's a florist and it stays a florist, but they did a little remodel, it doesn't necessarily mean that it requires site plan review.
But if it's a florist, then it's retail, and if the next place is retail, I, you know, I agree, so.
But what really triggers it is if you have the increase in traffic. So if they had a site plan, like the one we just looked at with, how many spaces were on there originally? I think 34 or 26 or something. If they come back and they need to add six parking spaces, so that, you know, they're adding 20% to the parking lot, that triggers, is you're going to change stormwater? And traffic flow. So the only other suggestion that I would say is if you wanted to increase the 1,500 square feet to a higher threshold.
I actually contend with that. I think that's a good size to keep it at.
I agree with Pete.
Michelle?
And I think you said last time when we were discussing this, you were concerned that they would do just under the 1,500 square feet, and then potentially they could come back with just under 1,500 square feet and make these changes without having to do the site plan review. So I thought you did want to include some other language that would capture a subsequent change that would still
Yeah, and I'm not sure how to do that, but you'd want to say you want to catch the 1,500 square feet could be accrued over time. You know, you, you need language that says for over five
Cumulative.
Yeah, cumulative changes over a five-year period.
I'm going to play devil's advocate, Mark, and just say, you know, going back to the uses issue. Let's say that we had somebody who was using an existing building for, you know, I don't know, video production or something. And the next tenant that they wanted to rent to was going to be using a laboratory. That's a very different type of use. It's a different type of use from an environmental standpoint. Do you think we should be, do you think we have a gate to protect us from change of use that isn't, you know, dramatically different, but still could have different environmental impacts?
Applicant for a building permit for new construction or addition to a business or industrial structure that creates a disturbance in lot coverage of 1,500 square feet or more in the aggregate. Or if a change in occupancy or use, which increases the previously approved, well, why not put that there? Or if a change in occupancy, which increases the previously approved occupant load by 10% or more. Or a change in use. Because laboratory would be different than retail. That's a different use.
Yep.
It's, I should get you guys that chart. I'm going to try and find that. We probably have something in our bylaw.
Well. Yeah, the site plan review under 6.7.1.3 on page 30 says adequacy of the methods of disposal of waste. So that is where we would be catching it, is on site plan review.
Some, I got it right here. I'll share it with you guys. So under the BBRS 780 CMR 302.0, classification. All structures shall be classified with respect to occupancy in one or more of the use groups listed below. Where a structure is proposed for a purpose which is not specifically provided in 780 CMR. Such structures shall be classified in use group which the occupancy most nearly resembles. Number one is assembly. And that'll include anything from stadium to a restaurant. Business, which is office space and whatever. Educational, factory, industrial. Five is high hazard. Six is institutional. Seven is mercantile, residential, storage, utility miscellaneous, and they have subgroups also. That, you getting that might help to explain the difference between the occupancy and use. Sorry, I'm not good at typing at the same time. Just sent it. Wicked boring. So does anybody else have any input towards the site plan review, proposed bylaw change?
Looks good to me.
The only thing. So we can send this, I was hoping to get comment back from Nate. Right? I know he's so busy. I'll try him one more time. I'll send it to you guys now. And if he does give comment, it's okay to him because he's the one that's got to enforce it. And we'll send it to Amy Questle and hopefully get that with a public hearing as well. Okay, I shared that with you guys too. Kathy, you got both. Uh, so hopefully we can get something done with that because I know that's something that it's been asked. You tried to be cleared up for some time now. Um. I'm just going to jump ahead to item number seven, development opportunities district. How does everybody feel about just kind of taking this off the agenda for a little bit and maybe moving it to April or May? We just got so much going on. Uh, I'd like to just not table it, but just push it back a little bit.
Yeah, I agree.
I do too. Yep, I do too.
There was no action required with that, so that doesn't really require a vote. Good with that, Kathy? Okay. Um, so jumping back to number six on the agenda, master plan implementation. Uh, I know Jack and Michelle both went. I'm going to defer to you right now, Michelle.
Well, it went um pretty well. Um, they they there was some good conversation about um all the things that have been completed over the past year. Uh, they want to reach out to or or like design a way of reaching out to the different boards and and getting that information available, uh compiling something. And I think, um, you know, trying to make it available to the public, um, probably on the webpage or something. Um, but yeah, um. I they hadn't met in a while, so um it's it's good to see that they're you know, going to start meeting more regularly and uh following up on how far along um the town is coming with these different goals that are put into the master plan. So it's exciting. It was it was nice to join.
When is their next meeting?
Oh goodness, it was.
A month out or more?
Um. It was, I want to say one a month. March tenth, April fourteenth, and May twelfth. Second Wednesday of the month is what they.
Um, so based on our discussion tonight about the development opportunities district, would you mind bringing that information back with them that we just like to again, not table it, but just halt any discussion until April or May?
Yeah, that's fine. Um, I I think, um, you know, they were going to try to get something together for us if we were trying to bring it to um this town meeting, but um, you know, it it's it's um, it would be tight, tight to get it done at this point anyways. So
Yeah.
I think um aiming for the next town meeting would be good.
Excellent. Thank you for the update.
Sure.
Um. Gets us up to item eight. I think I'll progress everything. Um.
You missed number five, Mark.
We did miss that. Oh, recodification of the bylaws. That's right. And I think that got shot down. It's not mistaken, right, Michelle?
Yeah, so that was kind of my mistake because I thought that this whole recodification process would kind of be the update to the planning board rules and regulations that we need if we were to roll it in, but um I was wrong. And um it it would need to, the planning board rules and regulations do need to be updated before they can be rolled into this sort of process. So that in itself is still going to have to be uh done some, you know, its own undertaking.
So that's something we we will need to work on in the not too distant future that has updated rules and regs.
Yes.
Hopefully, maybe right after the uh forty-three uh D process gets concluded. Maybe we can delve into that.
Definitely.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments on the codification?
Yep.
No, thank you. Um. So next item is the review of the zoning board appeals petitions for Cornell fifteen Morrison Way and Hoffman five Marigold Lane. Does anybody have any comments that they'd like to make on those? I reviewed them briefly. It's just like small residential things. One's putting a shed up and the other one's uh I think it's looking for some relief or some work near the wetlands. I have to go to conservation as well. Uh, I don't think we should make any comments.
Yeah, I agree. I'd make a motion, no comment from us.
I'd second Peter's motion. Oh, all right. So we have a motion in a second. Um, all in favor, Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
And myself, vote aye. Uh. Next order of business. Um, gonna say we have, does anybody have any old business or new business that they'd like to discuss right now? I'm good. Um. So we have some minutes of meeting to approve. Have uh the December third, twenty twenty uh forty-three D public hearing minutes for the Rhino Capital Advisors, forty-three Main Street joint meeting between the Board of Selectmen, Planning Board, Conservation Commission, Board of Health, and Open Space Committee. Uh, has anybody reviewed these?
I did.
Looked good to me. Michelle, you have a comment?
I did have a few, um, like the the very first paragraph was held at seven P M remotely from various locations. Should that say via Zoom or is it okay as various locations?
I don't know. From a legal standpoint, I don't know. I mean, we don't want to give all our addresses, I guess, or where we sat that night, but um. So I don't even know if you need that.
Yeah. Because I think she did the same for the next seven minutes and I didn't know, you know, is that okay or um? Should it say via Zoom?
I almost think you could strike that, just say remotely.
Held remotely? Okay.
Um. So I don't know if there's somebody else that we could ask for a clarification. I don't think that you need from various locations, but I don't think it harms the minutes either. It just seems weird to say it. Did you have other corrections?
Yeah, um, there were just, you know, some typos here and there, obviously long minutes. It's to be expected. Um, and then Brittany Gessner, her last name was spelled incorrectly. So I I thought I would just kind of jot down the um typos that I noticed and send them back to Colleen just to make those few changes. Um, it unless, I mean, is it something that I need to send back to her to do the changes or?
Um. So normally what we do um at conservation, Joe Chamberlain is really good at that. I think he was an English teacher in a former life. So I I would make a motion to approve the minutes with changes noted from Michelle for the December third twenty twenty uh joint meeting of the forty-three D committee or forty-three D hearing.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Uh, so approve the minutes with changes noted. All in favor, Barbara?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Myself, Jack's screen's still frozen. Uh, next set of minutes, um, did you have a similar set of uh little notation changes, Michelle?
I did. Yeah, um, I think this one went, there weren't as many. Um, the name Gessner, just that question in the beginning, you know, does it need to say Zoom or not? Um. And then actually I think at the end, a- and so this is where I I assume all the boards are going to review and and um it it at the very end, it didn't say that Concom had continued their meeting, just that planning board did. So I do think it does need to be um included that Concom also continued their hearing.
Yeah, that should be noted for sure if they did.
Yeah.
Because they they did.
Right.
Um. And that's kind of, go ahead.
Um, I think what was the other note that I put? I thought that there was still a question as far as the um wetland delineation for that second meeting. I thought that it was still um continued to the following meeting where that was finalized. So.
Yeah. Well.
I know there was like one po- one portion of it was was approved and then one portion was continued, I thought.
The Vernal Pool was uh the issue.
Okay.
I think it was, they were only approving either it was, they only approved the wetland line. They still needed to address the Vernal Pool or vice versa. They
Yeah, I think that's right.
And they were going to do something that was more conservative to delineate the wet uh the Vernal Pool.
Right.
Which everybody agreed to, but I don't now remember which order it was.
I think you're right, though. I think it was the Vernal Pool that was still in question. Now, yep. Because that's when uh Scott Turner's uh team went out there and and did the flagging and then uh or or V H B did and then they went back. Their rented partners did. So that's what that was. That was the Vernal Pool.
Uh.
Not.
So so they did vote, I think they voted not only to continue, but also to approve a portion of the wetland line.
Right.
And we don't see that here, so you want to not approve these because that would be a big draft change and send it back to just double check that language?
Sure.
Um, we need a motion for that, Kathy, from a procedural standpoint, or we just send it back?
Not take action. Not take action on it. Don't, just don't take any action.
Okay. Okay, so we're not going to approve these as drafted. We'll just wait for a revision on December seventeenth uh minutes. Right. I think that concludes all of our business. Our next regular meeting is February twenty-fifth at uh seven P M. But Kathy, we also have a P A A meeting that night at six thirty. Yep. So everybody, you know, make a mental note that we have a plan approval authority meeting on February twenty-fifth at six thirty. We have to start a little earlier. We will have town council involved in that. That's uh in the Masquet River uh housing, whatever it is. There was a a minor change thing and we need to revote to kind of amend that. Uh. So don't forget to log in a little early on Thursday, the twenty-fifth. Uh. Barbara, you have a comment?
Yeah, Mark, be- before before we um adjourn, I just, I would like to know, um, I'd like to just check in with Kathy and I I can follow up with an email on this as well. Um, but we'd really need to be seeing the agenda, the um, the meeting minute more frequently. Um, I'd like to be seeing one every week for the prior meeting. So every meeting we at least have one meeting from the prior meeting that we can approve because we're so far out of whack with getting these meeting minutes um reviewed. And I know, I don't know about anybody else, but my memory's not that great that I can just read it and remember everything that we did. So it's important that we get them done more timely. Um, I'll follow up with email as well so that maybe we, you know, if we need to get some additional support in or whatever it's going to take. Um, but we, I I noticed, I I don't think we've seen a meeting minutes for the regular planning board meetings for at least a few, maybe a month. So it would be, I think it would be very helpful to get that done.
Sure, I can speak to that. I mean, I just think that being quarantined in December, I was out for three weeks. So that kind of really threw me threw me back quite a bit. So the things I have to work on are deadlines and Z B A has also been extremely busy, but I actually finished one right before this meeting. So for your next meeting, you should have a couple. But that's the story behind that, so.
And you know what? I I'm perfectly comfortable. If we need additional help, you've got a lot on your plate. Everybody's got a lot going on. Um, yeah, we have to get it tempered.
Don't take that as a reprimand or any kind of a chastising.
Just, I'm not taking it as a reprimand, but I'm just explaining kind of that's where I'm coming from, still trying to catch up from that. So.
Yeah, so I think what Barbara's suggesting is that if you get into a situation like situation like that where you might need help, um, it seems like there might be somebody else at Town Hall that could help with doing some of the minutes if you get behind. Because I I think her goal and I think all of our goal is just to make sure that the planning board's not in violation.
Right, no, mine too. But like I said, I'm I'm doing the best I can right now. And unfortunately, when I do the minutes, a lot of times things come up where I need to take action. So it's not always a good idea to have someone else do them because then I, you know, something might get missed. That needs to be done.
Um, okay, well, we can, we can discuss it more tomorrow. I think, you know, if we need, my my main goal is to get us the support that we need to make sure not only we're in compliance, but that, you know, all these things are moving more smoothly. I just got over COVID myself and I can tell you it is a bear and it ha- it was two weeks out of work and that's it. Um, so um, and I know Pete, Pete's had his run in with it as well. Um, but it this agenda thing, this uh minute, meeting minute thing has been an ongoing issue the whole time I've been on planning board. It's just net, we've just never caught up with it. So that tells me that we probably need more support in that department. And and we should, we should be able to ask for it if we need it, you know? All right, I on that note, I would make a motion to adjourn.
I second. So I have a motion and a second. All in favor, Barbara? Peter?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Jack? Myself, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, everybody, and we will see you next week at the uh forty-three Main Street hearing on Thursday at seven o'clock.